Good evening, everyone. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before I start the regular council meeting, we are going to have a public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant presented by our Economic Development Director, Fran Miglerino.
Thank you and good evening. And if you looked at the table back there, those are some of the ideas we have for this particular public meeting. I really need you to sign that. You're not signing whether you're pro or con on our suggested project. You're only signing that you heard the public comment, period, or the public process. It's required by the federal government. So if you haven't signed it, I really appreciate if you sign it. You're not really affidavit anything, so. I'm Fran Miglerino, Economic Development Director for the City of Brooklyn. Welcome to the public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant. The City of Brooklyn is one of 51 Cuyahoga County urban communities eligible to apply for grant funding for fiscal year 2016 from the Cuyahoga County Department of Development. These federal funds are issued through HUD, and the City of Brooklyn is eligible for up to $150,000 in grant. The funds are aimed at promoting development activities. Eligible activities include infrastructure, but not limited to streets, curbs, water, and sewer lines. Neighborhood facilities can be included. Included but not limited to: public schools, libraries, recreational facilities, parks and playgrounds, and facilities for people with special needs such as the homeless or domestic violence shelters, nursing homes, or group homes for the disabled. These eligible activities must meet the national objectives of either benefiting low-to-modern income persons or to aid to the elimination of blight. The county provides the City of Brooklyn with a map, which is back on the table, that indicates those areas that are considered low-to-modern income, as well as improvement target areas in our community. We actually have four census blocks for low-to-modern income here in the City of Brooklyn, as depicted on the maps that have been put on the table in the back. We also have one improvement target area. However, our project is not in one of the ITAs, which is a targeted improvement area. Tonight, I invited Maria Maggenti to talk about our suggested project.
Good evening. My name is Maria Maggenti. I'm the Recreation Manager at the John M. Coyne Recreation Center. Tonight, I'd like to present a suggested project for the funding for the city. The city's recreation center is in need of upgrading the baseball diamonds, which include new drainage, leveling, seeding, fencing, backstops, and repairs for the dugouts, new digital LED scoreboards, and the purchase of a storage garage unit that would house the equipment needed to maintain the new baseball fields. This project would serve the residents of the city and has a regional approach as we partner with numerous area leagues who use our fields, bringing visitors and teams from areas in Ohio neighborhoods to enjoy the games and tournaments. Costs associated with the project are approximately $174,475. Matching funds required would be $24,475. This project could be completed in approximately 30 to 150 days of the notice to proceed.
Thank you, Maria. That figure means that the City of Brooklyn would only participate at about a 7% level if we were effective in getting a $150,000 grant. There are matching funds that are not required, but they are encouraged. So at 7%, a match is very limited for us, which would be a lot to say for Brooklyn to actually apply for the Community Development Block Grant funds. The county strongly recommends grant applications that include comments from the residents regarding the project. Also, the county's recommendations for a strong grant application include: applications that explain how the proposed project fits strategically with other development activities already completed or underway in the community. As you recall, in 2014, Brooklyn began upgrading the parks with new playground equipment. You see it all the time. You see kids all over it practically every day during the summer. And new basketball courts. And the courts have been flooded with kids since we got them all upgraded. And also, projects that demonstrate the activities and the milestones are realistic and feasible to ensure that all the CDB grant funds are expended, spent, before November 30, 2016. This project that Maria just explained to you can be done in a very short timeframe. This competitive grant is due on October 30, about 30 days from now. The grant awards will be announced in December, and the schedule for the projects will be January through November for completion of 2016. A resolution authorizing the grant application will be presented at the October 13 City Council Meeting. The public has seven days to respond to this suggestion. On the back table, as I explained before, are illustrations of what we suggest. And we're always open to suggestions. I gave you the parameters, the eligibility projects that can be awarded under CDBG. If you have thoughts, I'd love to hear them. The City of Brooklyn has been relatively successful in obtaining grants funding over the past several years. The City of Brooklyn looks forward to a continued relationship with the county. If you have other suggestions, you want to talk to me about them tonight, that would be great. If you would like to email me, or Jill Ludwig, the mayor's assistant, that would be great. If you'd like to write to us, we're at 7619 Memphis Avenue. And we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. Mary Jo, would you do the roll call, please? Andy Selhertz.
Here.
Katie Gallagher.
Here.
Tony DiMarco.
Here.
Ron Van Kirk.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Mary Bell Beer.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
I'd like to start off by letting everybody know that on behalf of council, we'd like to express our condolences to the family of Jean Hartman. Jean was a longtime resident on Bid Off Road, and she was on our Board of Zoning Appeals. She served from 1992 till 2015. Tonight on the agenda, we have some new items. We have a resolution to authorize the mayor to submit an application for the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement Loan for the pavement and sewer rehabilitation of Rodone Road and Rodone Alley. The total project cost is $2,352,000, and if awarded, the loan that would cover us for 20 years at 0% and it would cover $1,175,000 of that $2 million. The timeline for the project, if awarded, the engineering would begin July 1, 2016, and end January 4, 2017. Bid advertising and awards would begin February 2, 2017, and end March 14. Construction would begin April 11, 2017, and end November 18. We have a repeated ordinance approving the purchase of 12 dash cameras and 35 body worn cameras for a total price of $115,315. And this also includes the software. About $30,000 of this would be covered by grant monies previously awarded. But an ordinance enacting a new police section, 54914, possessing certain weapons in public places in the codified ordinances. This prohibits members of the public from carrying BB guns, pellet guns, knives having blades two and a half inches or longer, brass knuckles, a census, a billy, karate sticks, blackjack, swords, or sabers in public places, and making a misdemeanor one if convicted. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with Juvenile Diversion Coordinator Lou Glizio to perform the duties for 2016 and 17. This allows the city to pay Mr. Glizio $500 a month and a maximum of $18,000 per year. The Cuyahoga County Juvenile Court reimburses the city no more than $12,000 per year for this position. Ordinance to amend the appropriations for 2015 fiscal year by increasing it by $265,250. This includes an increase of $5,000 for parks to cover day camp expenses, an increase of $4,750 in building for new printer, scanner, and copier, $5,000 for civil service for additional tests, $50,000 for public lands and buildings for unrealized utility savings and miscellaneous programs, $25,000 in data systems for council to put the meetings on television, $50,000 in street construction to repair road damage, $70,000 for retrospective medical claims, $2,500 for park permits, $3,000 in hydrant bonds, and $20,000 in wages and benefits for the popus fund. We also have an ordinance to add a full-time administrative assistant to the Police Department. This is in relation to regionalizing with the dispatch. The starting rate for this is $17.92 per hour, or $37,263 annually, and up to $24.11 per hour, or $50,141 annually. An ordinance to add a law enforcement service clerk to the Police Department. Again, this is in relation to the regionalizing dispatch. The starting rate is $15.52 per hour, or $32,284 annually, or $24.11 per hour, $50,141 annually. Council will adjourn an executive session tonight midway through the meeting to discuss those two positions. The mayor has requested this, that this be passed by emergency motion tonight. Okay, we will now proceed to...oh, just one more reminder before I move on. Our next council meeting is actually on a Tuesday, October 13, because of Columbus Day, so I just wanted to remind everybody about the holiday, and also that the city offices will be closed that day, so garbage collection will be one day late. At this time, we will hold our public session. If anyone in the audience has anything for the good and welfare of the City of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name, address, including city, and please keep your comments to five minutes or less. Okay, we will now have reports of committees, commissions, and boards. First up is our Finance Committee, Councilwoman Pucci.
Thank you. Good evening. The Finance Committee met earlier this evening at 6:30. These meetings are open to the public, and the public is encouraged to attend. We address the following legislation. First, Resolution 2015-6, which is the legislation for the application for the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement Fund. The only thing I would add to what was previously mentioned about this is that we did apply for these funds last year in a different combination. We did not score high enough to get funding, so this year, we've changed our strategy and hoping to increase our points. And one of the components to that is increasing what we're willing to pay as our local match. Some of the advantages to the zero-interest loan are it'll help us not have to pay for the $2 million upfront, or look at issuing a note, and it'll help us with cash flow with consistent payments over 20 years. The next ordinance that we recommended was passing by emergency measure this evening for the body cameras and the dash cams, and authorizing the mayor to enter into the agreement with the Juvenile Diversion Coordinator. The difference in what our Juvenile Diversion Coordinator has paid from what we receive from the county is made up by fees that we collect from the parents of the participants in this program. Ordinance 2015-57 is the amended appropriations. We'll be passing that this evening by emergency measure. And as Ms. Gallagher mentioned, the two ordinances, 58 and 59, relating to the two new positions within the Police Department, we'll be addressing those in executive session since they deal with matters of personnel. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Recreation Board, Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. The City of Brooklyn's Recreation Center is pleased to report the Silver Sneaker Program took in $7,853 in 2012. By the end of August 2015, that amount more than doubled by taking in $16,911. I would like to thank everyone who participated in the Silver Sneaker Program in making a huge success. The next Rec Board meeting will be held on Monday, October 19, in the Rec Center Meeting Room at 7:00 PM. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up is Legislative Update, Councilwoman Bell Beer.
Thank you. There will be a number of issues to be decided this November election, and I would like to comment tonight on one in particular. That is the Arts and Culture Issue 8. In 2006, the voters of Cuyahoga County passed public funding for arts and culture by putting a 1.5% tax per cigarette, or 30 cents per pack. These funds are used by various projects throughout the county for the enjoyment of all. The original levy in 2006 was for 10 years, and the renewal of this levy would be for another 10 years. Remember, this is not an increase. It simply keeps the same tax rate on cigarettes that has been existed for the last 10 years. In 2013, organizations that received funding through this levy provided 1.4 million educational experiences for children and over 18,000 field trips. Studies have shown that students who participate in arts and culture demonstrate improved math and reading skills, performing higher on standardized tests. They stay in school longer, and they graduate at higher rates. Our arts and culture sector employs thousands of people. It produces hundreds of millions of dollars in direct economic activity, and it plays a leading role in attracting millions of tourists and visitors to our fine cities. Remember, this levy is not a tax increase. It simply keeps the same tax on cigarettes as has been there for the past 10 years. If you smoke, you will continue to pay the same tax. If you don't smoke, you don't pay anything. So remember to vote on Issue 8. No increase in tax, tremendous benefits to the residents of our county. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, Board of Zoning Appeals, Commissioner Kolsar.
Thank you. The Board of Zoning Appeals met on Thursday, September 17, here at the City Hall Conference Room, to hear two requests from CNM signs for, for one being a sign variance exceeds the maximum sign area, the other being the number of signs exceeding the allowable. This is for business identification of CNM signs located at 6819 Memphis Avenue. Both requests were withdrawn by the applicant as he decided to remove one of the signs, and neither were needed. One other request was made from Kevin Hanum for 120 square foot variance to the maximum size for an addition of an accessory structure located at 10302 Bid Off Road, and that request was approved. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. The Planning Commission will meet this Thursday, October 1, at 6:00 PM, in the conference room in the Brooklyn City Hall. We will hear a request from Philingo Kids Signs Incorporated to install vinyl banner sign on the building front for business identification of Halloween City located at 4798 Ridge Road, signed to be removed after the holiday. A request from Riverstone Land Surveying, representing Burt Edwards of Intermodal 1 LLC, for the lot consolidation located at 8215 Clinton Road and vacant lot on Associate Avenue. Permanent parcels 43113042, 43113048, and 43114020. To hear a request from Kenneth Ragland of Keystone Tailoring Manufacturing for site plan approval of the exterior building renovation located at 4600 Tiedemann Road, permanent parcel 43205003. And also to hear an old request from LS Architects Incorporated for site plan approval for the parking lot extension and redesign located at 4630 Ridge Road, permanent parcel And like I said, this was deferred from a special planning commission meeting dated on July 20, 2015. Next, we'll hear from our Public Works Chair and School Board Liaison, Councilman Selhertz.
Thank you. On Public Works, you've already heard a few times about the Rodone Project. Also, in between the finance meeting and the council meeting, I had a chance to talk with Mr. Courtney. Somewhere in October, we will be going out to rate some roads for next year's projects. It should be roughly about nine or 10 streets they were planning on, coming in probably a little bit under $700,000, and that's in reflection to American greetings leaving. This year in 2015, we did approximately 14 or 15 streets at a little bit under $1.2 million. That concludes the Public Works Report. School Report. The School Board held its regular monthly meeting Tuesday, September 15, at 6:00 PM in Room 173. Presentation by Bob Timmons, the Polaris president, superintendent, and his staff was given to the board and members of the audience. The Middleburg High School received top grades for class of 2013 in all four categories: placement, technical skills, four-year graduation rates, and five-year graduation rates. The school also met or exceeded state standards in each of several ungraded categories such as reading and math. Polaris placed 94.4% of students in jobs to military or a higher education. At its old, old Boulevard campus and other sites, Polaris serves about 1,800 high schoolers and 8,200 adults per year from Middleburg Heights, Berea, Brook Park, Brooklyn, Fairview Park, North Olmsted, Olmsted Falls, Olmsted Township, and Strongsville. On the ballot this November, Polaris Career Center will be asking residents in their nine participating communities, which includes Brooklyn, to vote for a .69 mil tax increase to pay for new equipment and programming. This will cost about $24 per year for a $100,000 home. The last time Polaris asked for a tax increase was in 1984. $24 million will be used to update career technical classrooms, labs, and equipment. $12.5 million is planned to be used to repair heating, ventilating, air conditioning, roofing, electrical, and plumbing. $6.6 million to repair walls, lighting, security, and handicapped access. $1.4 million to improve technology, and $2 to $3 million per year to create state-mandated middle school programs. In his presentation, he highlighted Andrew Wilhelm from Brooklyn. He was in a Polaris class of 2013. Andrew is a two-time BPA national contestant with sixth place in 2012 and second in a U.S.-Canada Net Riders competition in 2013. He's currently enrolled at Baldwin Wallace in Computer Security. In 2008, 2009, there were 134 students from Brooklyn. The current school year, there are 190. The Board also approved a resolution supporting the Polaris Schools' permanent improvement levy in upcoming November 3 election. At the meeting, also a number of other actions were read and approved by the Board regarding personnel, classified hours, and staff, et cetera. For other agenda items discussed and voted upon at this meeting and any other meeting, please go to the school system's website and click on the Board of Education tab and then on the Board Docs tab. Upcoming events, there'll be a fundraiser for the high school hockey team on Saturday, October 24, starting at 7:00 PM at Bleachers on Ridge Road in Paramus South of Ridgewood. The event starts at 7:00 PM. The next board meeting is Tuesday, October 20, in Room 173 at the high school at 6:00 PM. Public is welcome and encouraged to attend. It's your school system for your children. That concludes my report.
Thank you. We will now move on to reports of council, and back over to you, Andy.
Tonight, you've heard about the levy for Polaris, just mentioned it. I understand there are homes in Brooklyn that every penny counts. We all have, also have had our own local schools come to us, the residents, for a number of years for various levies. Polaris has not, as I just mentioned. If your household can afford to increase from this levy, I would ask for and urge your support for it. This Saturday, October 3, is the Fall Festival. Not far from that is the end of the month, and there will be Halloween. I will be sponsoring once again the Halloween contest with several prize categories. At the next council meeting, we'll be discussing the details of it. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, Tony DiMarco.
I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Next up, Ron Van Kirk.
Thank you. Just one quick question. I've had a lot of residents still discussing the issue of the council meetings being put on television. I know we talked about it in the last meeting. Have we had...I haven't heard anything. Maybe I missed something. Have we had any headway with Bailey's and found out what's going on? I don't know who to ask that to, but...
I have a note. I got one email from them saying that if we do run those lines with fiber optics, we're looking at it for six months.
Okay. I would just ask that maybe we task somebody with...I mean, that's probably like the chief...I wouldn't say complain. People to me really aren't complaining about it.
They aren't working on it. I mean, it's not...
Well, I know, but we've been discussing this since June. So I mean, it's, you know, it's taken...it seems like it's taken a long time. I'm not placing blame on anybody. I'm just saying I think that we need to do whatever it takes to get it done. I mean, we gotta get it done, in my personal opinion, so.
It seems like we're always waiting on someone to give us the equipment, and I don't know how you get them to do it faster, but...
If we could just look into it, I'd like to see at least a decision made, but hopefully soon, because again, the residents, they're the ones that are, you know, getting the phone calls and things like that from them to get it put back on there. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Councilman, if I could just add that...
Sure.
There's so many different components to that process that trying to bring them together has been difficult. We've allocated the money already for the equipment. We've issued purchase orders for the camera, for the computers. The computer's already being programmed by Bailey. It seems that where the conduit hits the wall is where we're running into a problem right now, and that's what we're pushing on. But I know we have both purchased or issued purchase orders for all of the hardware, and our next step would be to find the conduit to get it to the public through the cable vendors. So that is what I can tell you from the finance department's perspective on that.
What would...Mr. Kolsar, what would take the six months to actually run the cables?
I believe, yeah, you have to deal with construction crews, things of that nature.
Is that for Time Warner? If we...have we allocated the funds for that, any portion that we'd have to pay for that?
For running the fiber optics?
I don't know. Do we...
We haven't got a quote yet.
We haven't done that. We're still dealing with them.
Okay.
They are broadcast, I believe, on the website.
It's online, right? Right. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Kathy Pucci.
Thank you. First, I would like to offer my sincerest personal condolences to the family of Mrs. Jean Hartman, who passed away. I knew her very well. I had met her prior to my appointment on the Board of Zoning Appeals, which I think was in 1993, but I really got to know her quite well during the five years I served with her, and then we continued the relationship. She was a wonderful person. She was a dedicated volunteer, not only to different things in the city, but also she was a longtime member and officer of the Friends of the Brooklyn Library. She had very strong opinions, and she believed passionately in issues that impacted the quality of life for our residents. And she was really a voice for the residents on the Board of Zoning Appeals. I know she lived in Brooklyn. She came here in 1961, and she was very proud of her family's longevity in this community. Her great-granddaughter just graduated from Brooklyn High School this past spring. It was a privilege to know her all these years. I had a lot of respect for her, and I know she's really going to be missed. Safe Rides to School, we have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow, Tuesday, September 29, at 7:30 AM in the pre-K 7 office conference room in the elementary school. Previously, we'd been meeting in Brookridge, so this is going to be a nice treat for us to be able to have our meeting in the new facility. The primary topic we'll be discussing is the 5K and the Family Fun Walk, which is in connection with the Fall Fest this Saturday, October 3. I too am supporting the Polaris issue. As Mr. Selhertz mentioned, they have not come back to the voters in a very long time. It is a very nominal amount. We have a large percentage of students in our community who have benefited from Polaris, and then those who are continuing to benefit from it. And this is really a perfect example of regional collaboration that really works. So if you can afford it, I would encourage you to please support it. I too wanted to mention, I was going to ask for an update on the whole situation... I too wanted to mention, I was going to ask for an update on the whole situation with the cable TV, because I'm getting a lot of people asking me about this. Residents, it's mostly seniors, are very disappointed, and you know, I think we have to remember a couple things. The first is, we've known for almost a year this was going to happen, and in the spring, we had come to a consensus that we definitely were going to move forward with the two cable providers, because it wasn't going to be that much for the city as far as in expense, and that was ATT U-verse, which will be a new addition for us, and Wide Open West. The only sticking point was with Time Warner, and that's because they wanted us to run fiber optic cable, and their guesstimate at it was about $50,000, and we wanted a more firm estimate on it before we moved forward. But there was, in fact, a consensus among council at the time that we wanted to be able to move forward with three, and, you know, I'm not sure where the holdup is, but I know when we recessed in June, we were pretty strong, strongly of the opinion that we did not want to break in service, at least for the two cable providers. We knew that Time Warner would take longer, so I don't know what has to be done, but we need to somehow expedite this and get this moving along. And that completes my report, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Mary Bellbeer.
Thank you. Just a couple of opinions, my own personal opinions, about the Arts Culture and Culture Issue 8, and also the Polaris. I can only state from my own personal experience about the arts and culture issue, coming from the Tremont area, every single weekend in August, they put out a production called Arts in August. Every single weekend, you get a chance, as a resident, anybody can come to it, to come to Lincoln Park, bring your little chair, bring your lunch, have dinner at one of the great restaurants around there, and experience some of the most fabulous, fabulous performances out there. From dance troupes to the Cleveland Orchestra, to the Verb ballets, to Shakespeare, I can only tell you how fabulous it is. So I strongly, strongly support this Issue 8, because Cleveland is second to none as far as the Cleveland Orchestra is concerned, as far as our art museums are concerned, and many children growing up are not exposed to that at home. And by being in school, the schools are able to take them on field trips and expose them to some of the wonderful culture in the city. And yes, I do believe that it kind of helps a kid concentrate, I always had my kids take piano lessons, and they, I could see the difference between, you know, they were able to concentrate real well when it came to schoolwork. So as a mom talking that way, that's something I believe. Now also, with the Polaris levy, being in the restaurant business, if you haven't been there, you must go to their chefing program there. They have a makeshift restaurant where they teach the kids chefing, and I believe they've won now six titles, state champions, and I highly recommend people go there and see it. They have a makeshift restaurant, and they have the kids come out and serve. They not only prepare the food, but then they teach them how to deal with the public to come out and serve. And then right next to the chefing department, they have a fabulous bakery that a pastry chef teaches the children all these fabulous pastries, and then they have a big giant bake cellar on the holidays, so if you don't feel like baking, you can always go there and buy it. So Polaris always kind of reminded me of, a little bit, because I grew up in the area of like West Tech, it kind of was like a little, reminds me where you can have that on-job training type thing, but it does so much more, so if you can, please, please keep that in mind. Another thing I wanted to talk about was our Senior Center. I love the Senior Center, and I love being a senior citizen, but I just want to throw out a few things. You can still get the snow removal, it's a little bit more money, but you can still get it, you can still sign up for it. They have a wonderful program there called Meals on Wheels. Just meeting so many residents this past summer, a lot of them, you know, you can tell they're alone, you know, and, and it would be nice to get a hot meal, but if you sign up at the Senior Center, it's roughly about $7 a day, an equivalent to about two meals a day. So I'm going to give around the holidays a week for a gift to one of our residents, and I'm hoping that he catches on and likes it and will want to sign up for it. So if you get a chance, look into that. The other thing that they do there, which is great, is they have great lunches there, and it gives seniors the opportunity to get together, to chit-chat, and Mr. Stutzman drives our brand-new senior van, it's beautiful, he'll pick you up, he'll drop you back off at home, he'll take you shopping, and any local doctor's appointments you have. So it is, it's a great, it's a great opportunity for seniors to take advantage of our wonderful, wonderful Senior Center, and all those seniors that are there playing bocce ball, playing pool, working in the craft department, cooking, whatever, they are a storehouse of wisdom and knowledge, and it's just a joy to sit there and talk to them and get to know them better. I'd also like to congratulate the fine city of Rocky River on their grand opening of Whole Foods. I was invited to the opening, and all I can say is wow, just fantastic. Do yourself a favor, drive out there and experience it. Yes, I am a little jealous, we don't have it, but, but that's okay, but it's unbelievable. I'm so glad it's in this area here, and I don't have to drive all the way to Chagrin, so please, if you get a chance, go out there. Lastly, what an exciting week it was this past week to have Pope Francis visit the United States. My neighbors, Mr. and Mrs. Rojas, called me up, "Mary, come over and watch the Pope with us." I ran over with my coffee mug, I think I wept just as much as the House Speaker Boehner did, but they were tears of joy. In his Jesuit tradition, what a man for others. His simplicity and wisdom must be admired. I like the line he used on Congress when he addressed Congress, and he said, "The yardstick you use to measure others will be the yardstick that will be used to measure you." And that concludes my report, and make it a good week. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Kevin Tansky.
Thank you. I've got a few more complaints on Ridge Road. I don't know if Chief Melkey or Mr. Verba can answer or find out the answer on these traffic lights. The synchronization of these traffic lights on Ridge Road, has anything been done? I notice when I drive down the street, sometimes those lights are synchronized and certain times of day they are not. Can anybody, one of yous give me an update on what's going on, if they're going back to them?
Yeah, I believe they were waiting, the last, once that water repair was made, then they were supposed to get together with the, and go back and synchronize them from bed off. Yeah, that's the last we heard.
You find out, John, I mean, next week, month, two months?
Yeah, I mean, it should be coming up any, probably this week, because I know they're coming up for landscaping this week, too.
Because sometimes those lights do, they're synchronized from, you know, two or three of them are, but...
Yeah, the gentleman from the county was off on disability for like the last six weeks, so he just started back this week, so I will check with him.
Okay, thank you. Well, I hope to see all of you at the Brooklyn's Fall Festival this Saturday at Veterans Memorial Park, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. I'd just like to add about the Fall Festival, it's from 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM, there'll be seven food trucks, hay rides, children's activities, a fall craft sale. Mary Jo has done a great job of advertising, there'll be chili cook-off, apple pie baking contest, just a ton of things to do, you know, beer truck, I mean, something for everybody. So we hope you come out, we ask for no political activity during the Fall Festival, so you can enjoy yourself and not worry about being accosted by anybody. Okay, so my other question I had was for, I've been bugging the police chief for the last few weeks, because I keep getting phone calls about commercial trucks being ticketed in our city, and so I'm asking some of the senior members of council and the mayor to kind of give the gist of our commercial truck ordinance and what the principle of it and what we're trying to do in our city, because the two people that are plumbers in our city don't have the type of driveway where they could pull it all the way back, and they have to have these trucks in order to work. So you're kind of caught between a rock and a hard place, they, they need that job to make money, otherwise, what are they going to do? So I think there needs to be some wiggle room with it. One gentleman actually quit his job and got a new job because he kept getting cited the $15 ticket, but he, he said, you know, "I'm a plumber, and the job that I do have actually mandates me to be on call once a week every month, so I'm going to have this issue, and, you know, it's going to be that week where the police officers are going around ticketing." So Mayor Kathy, maybe you can put some insight into this, if there's any wiggle room, I just don't want people to have to lose their job. You know, we do have a good, solid, working-class community, so. Mayor?
Are you referring to parking tickets in their driveway?
The commercial vehicles in their driveway.
All right. I only have a couple things. The first one, the Cuyahoga County Public Library notified me that they're going to do, start work on our library in January, if they're not going to add to the building, but they're going to do all kinds of interior decorating. It's going to be about $300,000, they're going to put in all-new lighting and carpeting, and they're going to eliminate the toy room. You'll still be able to take out toys, which you'll have to order online or there at the library, and it'll be delivered to the library and you can pick it up. But all this is going to start in January, and they said Brooklyn is one of their busiest libraries. I was also notified by CEI that they're going to have their helicopter out checking the power lines. I know that they run right behind my house, and they fly very low and very slow, and if they see something, they'll hover there for a while, so if you see a helicopter, that's what they're doing, is checking the power lines. And also, we've had a few, people ask about Menards up on Brook Park, so I had the Building Department check again, and they, they were, they kept changing their mind how they wanted the interior of their stores done, and they have over 300 stores, so I guess now they finally settled on a plant, on a plan, and they said they're going to start in Brooklyn in spring, if not in spring, in summer for sure, next year. And I also support the Polaris levy. I think it's very important to offer something like that to kids that aren't going to go to college, and this certainly fills the bill, and that's all I have.
Next up is our Director's Reports, and Finance Director Dan Enavich will start.
Thank you, Council President Gallagher. I'd like to report tonight that as of today, the unencumbered balance in the general fund The unencumbered balance in all of our funds totals $22,567,366.49. The city's total cash balance is $26,746,321.56. The total general fund year-to-date revenues of $14,987,325 exceeds the year-to-date general fund expenses of $12,029,124.04 by $2,958,201.10. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, Building Commissioner Kolsar.
Thank you. I just want to give a little update on our property maintenance program. To date this year, we have issued 222 total violation notices. 92 of those notices alone were just for tall grass. City ended up having to cut a couple of those, future lien on those properties. Also want to just let everyone be aware that, you know, what we're, what we're trying to do here is help the community, help the, help the housing stock in doing these inspections. If you are cited for something, please feel free to call the Property Maintenance Inspector, Marty Byer, who handles most of these, or myself, and we're happy to help with any questions, help and coordinate contractors, and there are also financial programs, we do understand that there are extenuating circumstances. Most people want to keep their houses in nice shape, and, you know, because they're falling apart around them doesn't mean they're neglecting them, because they want to. There are programs out there that can help with that, too, and as always, if anybody has any questions, please feel free to give us a call at the Building Department. Thank you, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Move on to legislation. First, we have Resolution 2015-6 authorizing the mayor to prepare and have prepared and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's State Capital Improvement and/or Local Transportation Program and to execute contracts as required.
Introduce, may I suspend the rules?
Second.
To suspend the rules, Andy Sellhertz?
Yes.
Katie Gallagher?
Yes.
Tony DiMarco?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
To adopt, Andy Sellhertz?
Yes.
Katie Gallagher?
Yes.
Tony DiMarco?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Ordinance 2015-54 authorizing and approving the purchase of dash cameras and body cameras for the Brooklyn Police Department. Kathy, would you do the amendments that you discussed?
Yes, I move that we amend, or that we make the following amendments. In Section 1, Line 2, we're going to add watch guards systems. On Line 3, we're going to strike the word "of" and insert "not to exceed $115,315", and then further down in Line 3, we're going to add "not to exceed" and then $85,316.
Second.
Introduce, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Commend?
The amendment.
To amend, Andy Sellhertz?
Yes.
Katie Gallagher?
Yes.
Tony DiMarco?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Introduce, may I suspend the rules as amended?
To suspend the rules, Andy Sellhertz?
Yes.
Katie Gallagher?
Yes.
Tony DiMarco?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
To adopt as amended, Andy Sellhertz?
Yes.
Katie Gallagher?
Yes.
Tony DiMarco?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Ordinance 55 enacting new Section 54914 possessing certain weapons at or about public places of the codified ordinances of the City of Brooklyn, Ohio. This is on first reading. Ordinance 56 authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Juvenile Diversion Coordinator. Scott, does this have to be passed by emergency?
I believe Mr. Blisio was requesting that it is. I know that the county contract didn't be sent down, but I don't, I don't think that necessarily means that our agreement has to be passed, so you can't put it on first reading if you want.
Okay, this will be on first reading. Ordinance 57 amending the annual appropriations.
Introduce, may I suspend the rules?
Second.
To suspend the rules, Andy Sellhertz?
Yes.
Katie Gallagher?
Yes.
Tony DiMarco?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
To adopt, Andy Sellhertz?
Yes.
Katie Gallagher?
Yes.
Tony DiMarco?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
And as stated earlier, we are going to be going to executive session on matters relating to personnel regarding these two positions for the police department, administrative assistant and the law enforcement services clerk. Mayor, could you please tell me what, who needs to go into executive session?
The police chief, the law director, our HR person, and myself.
So moved?
Second.
To adjourn to executive session, Andy Sellhertz?
Yes.
Katie Gallagher?
Yes.
Tony DiMarco?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Move to reconvene?
Second.
To reconvene, Andy Sellhertz?
Yes.
Katie Gallagher?
Yes.
Tony DiMarco?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Okay, we're back, and we're going to vote on ordinances 58 and 59. Okay, we're back, and we're going to vote on ordinances 58 and 59. Our human resource person, Kevin Schavesta, is going to come up here and explain how council reached this decision.
Hi, yes. Without getting into the specifics, obviously, of the executive session, and generally was discussed in there, the wage rates for these positions, there was general discussion of parity within the other clerical positions in the City of Brooklyn. And the ultimate decision, which obviously you're going to amend to, was to use the steps one through three, which is from the A scale of the Ask Me contract, but then also have a higher rate for what essentially is going to be called, starting out, a secretary supervisor position within the Police Department of $22, I'll just say $22.195 for wage rate, annual wage rate based on 2,080 hours of $46,166.016. And for the clerk type position, the Law Enforcement Services Clerk, wage rate of $19.21610 and annual wage rate of, based on 2,080 hours, of $39,968.82210. And those are based off of looking at internally what is in the Ask Me contracts for the A scale. And then also, you have certain positions like the secretary supervisor and clerk where there are what are called, I guess, red circle rates. And acknowledging that, the mayor can have discretion up to those rates depending on his evaluation of experience for those positions when looking at hires.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yep.
Okay. We have ordinance 58 establishing the position of full-time administrative assistant to the chief of police, providing compensation for subposition with the Department of Public Safety. I'm going to make a motion that we amend this ordinance to read, establishing the position of full-time secretary supervisor in the Brooklyn Police Department and providing compensation for subposition within the Department of Public Safety in the City of Brooklyn, Ohio. Also amend Paragraph 4 to read Section 1, that one full-time position of supervising secretary of the Brooklyn Police Department and the Department of Public Safety Division of Police shall be created and designated by the chief of the Division of Police to be compensated as follows. Also to amend Paragraph 5 to read, at the discretion of the mayor, an employee may be hired into the position up to the rate of $22.195 per hour or $46,166.016 annually, where the employee has more than 15 years prior service in the Police Department performing clerical duties, emergency dispatching services, or similar work. Oh, and one more. And amend Section 2, the position of supervising secretary in the Brooklyn Police Department shall be responsible for performing duties in full or part, but not limited to perform administrative assistant services to the chief of police, utilize law enforcement services and databases to maintain department files and reports, obtain criminal history files.
Excuse, I think we need to eliminate the administrative assistant services as well in that second line, secretary supervi-
And what paragraph?
That same paragraph, Section 2, it'd just be the second line, perform secretary supervisory services.
Thank you.
Second.
So is it-
Is that a motion?
Secretary supervisor or secretary supervisory? Oh, that one is secretary supervisory services. Gotcha.
And the position is secretary supervisor in the contract, correct?
Okay.
Okay, you second, okay. To amend, Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Katie Gallagher.
Yes.
Tony DiMarco.
No.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Belbeer.
No.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
To, oh. Introduce by all, suspend the rules as amended.
Second.
To suspend the rules, Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Katie Gallagher.
No.
Tony DiMarco.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Belbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
To adopt as amended, Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Katie Gallagher.
Yes.
Tony DiMarco.
No.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Belbeer.
No.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance 59 establishing the position of full-time Law Enforcement Services Clerk and providing compensation for subposition within the Department of Public Safety, City of Brooklyn, Ohio. Move to make a motion that we amend Paragraph 5 to read, at the discretion of the mayor,